Good evening. It is Monday, August 29th, 2022. This is a Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Surely have you had a chance to take roll?
I have taken roll. Everybody is present. We do have a call.
Move on to the consent agenda. Board, are there any items of discussion or questions on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to Mayor's remarks. First item under my Mayor's remarks this evening is a pickleball court real estate contract with the Carney R1 Schools, September 19th close and considered the ordinance. I am pleased to present a real estate contract with the Carney R1 School District that we were able to negotiate for a cost of drainage improvements on the baseball field. So this is an equally beneficial project for both the school district and the city of Carney. Gilmore and Bell prepared a contract which will permit the city to develop a 12-court pickleball complex on the school campus. To be funded with the use tax proceeds as promised, a lease purchase financing will allow this project to be built commencing this fall with completion in early next summer. Thanks to our school board for their support of this project, an ordinance has been prepared for the board's approval of the contract, which will close September 19th. Megan Miller of Gilmore and Bell is available, I believe. I don't see her. She should be here. If there are any questions, this may have to be tabled momentarily, but Megan Miller from Gilmore and Bell did prepare the documents. That is in our packet. Are there any questions on the proposed ordinance? If not, can we read the ordinance on the first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to sign a real estate contract with the Carney School District for 3.2 acres.
Make a motion to approve on first reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Please read the ordinance by title only for the second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to sign a real estate contract with the Carney R1 School District for 3.2 acres.
So moved. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Next item under Mayor's remarks is a cooperative purchasing contract with McConnell and Associates in an amount of $2,017,417. Consider resolution. As the Carney School District did when building their new tennis court complex, the city is utilizing the inter-local purchasing system, better known as TIPS Purchasing Cooperative, to enter into a contract with McConnell and Associates out in North Kansas City to construct the 12-court pickleball complex, constructing a new surface for the skate park and a new parking lot area with a permanent restroom facility. The voters who supported the use tax made it possible for the city to undertake this project. Now, a proposed resolution authorizing this $2,017,417 contract is enclosed in 3B along with the site plan of the project, which I'm going to ask that Ryan Marcott, sorry Rhino, explain before we take a vote on the resolution.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I present to the board my worst kept secret in Carney, Missouri. This is a site layout and design for the pickleball complex naturally. Key elements include the 12 courts. There's two lanes with access to each court being directly from the lanes. So you don't have to walk across the court to gain access to an adjacent court, which was important. Kind of our feedback from the pickleball votes kind of indicated that it's really important to them as well. Right here, you're looking at the parking lot. It's an L shape. Currently, this little box here is where the current pickleball courts are now. Obviously, they'll be demolished and parking will go in its place, which we'll need because we'll have 12 courts. The new skate, the new slash old skate park will be in the same place. However, it will be a new surface, new fencing and everything there as well. The equipment will be taken off-site for the duration of the construction and be brought back when everything's finished. There'll be a retaining wall here on the east side as well. And then the drainage and everything, the not asphalt stuff. So that's in a nutshell, well, actually, excuse me. There's a restroom facility here with access to the trail coming right here to the east. It will be handicap accessible. So that's kind of why we have the zigzag going to it to the ADA's flow requirements. Anything on that?
I think a couple of key things, Ryan, if I could trigger on it. It is obviously that the bathroom is the same facility type that we put in Lyons Park. So kind of, you know, storm sheltered too, all concrete brought in by a massive crane. And then the new surface of the skate park is going to be the same surface material as the new pickleball material. So naturally, our next opportunity, as we expect this sport to grow in our community, is a possibility to relocate the skate park and have, what, three more courts would fit there? Two or three?
Four.
I think we could fit four.
They're dimensioned out on that plan.
So, and then I would like to, Mr. Gray Gillahan, represented the pickleball community extremely well, working with staff on making sure that we put forth a plan here for the board to consider that will serve our community extremely well. So thank you for bringing all those ideas and thoughts to us. If there's no questions or additional feedback from staff, we entertain a motion, I guess we're going to read the resolution.
To approve the resolution? A resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign a contract with McConnell and Associates for the pickleball court improvement project.
I make a motion to approve.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution passes.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Congratulations. Next item under Mayor's remarks is the assumption of Land and Water Conservation Fund deed covenant and considered an ordinance. So the ground that we just got authorization to purchase does have a deed restriction on it back in 1980 when the school district accepted a grant to construct the original tennis courts, tennis ball courts there. Part of that was funded through the Land and Water Conservation Fund Committee in the area to perpetually be dedicated to outdoor recreation forever. The city utilized the same funding when we constructed the amphitheater and the same grant funding when we developed the Lyons Park. So we understand the commitment to maintain these properties for outdoor recreation. Obviously, our intended purpose continues to comply with that restriction. A proposed ordinance is required to authorize a deed covenant to be recorded for this property, which also includes a portion of our current walking trail previously due to the city by the school. Staff has been working extremely hard, thank you Eric, Ryan, Jim and David, with the Missouri State Department of Natural Resources Park Division. And we have the necessary details for the city to assume the stewardship agreement for this property. So if we could, if there are no questions from the board, if we could read the proposed ordinance first time by title only.
An ordinance accepting 4.16 acres from the Carney School District and authorizing the filing of Land and Water Conservation Fund documents.
Motion to approve on first reading.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance accepting 4.16 acres from the Carney School District and authorizing the filing of Land and Water Conservation Fund documents.
So moved. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
For those of you that are here for the pickleball items on the agenda, that portion has officially finished this evening. You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or now would be a good time to bow out if you'd like to.
Congratulations.
No one wants to hear the financing? The financing plan?
Rick's an elected official himself, so he says so enough at these meetings.
They don't really care how we're going to pay for it.
Just tell them use tax.
Move on to Administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor Todd Goffey is here to report on the proposed lease purchase financing for the pickleball court project. Enclosed is a debt amortization schedule and a term sheet that he is prepared to solicit proposals from interested banking institutions. Also enclosed is a proposed resolution authorizing an amendment to the city's agreement with Piper Sandler to retain them as financial advisors. So, Todd, if you'd like to make a few comments?
Sure. Thank you, Jim. Good evening, Mayor. Report. The way this is set up, we've had very good success, as you know, in the past with soliciting the local banks and getting their interest in terms. So that's kind of the intent, is to go through the same process. This will be a lease purchase financing subject annual appropriation pledge of the city each year. And at the end of the day, it's secured by the lease on the property, which banks don't want. It's not a mortgage. Megan or Sid were here, they would want me to tell you that. It's not a mortgage. Can't do that under Missouri law, but it's set up as a base lease or a site lease under the lease document. So what we'll do is get this sent out tomorrow. And we'll have responses due back in about two weeks. And then we'll be ready to have Gilmore and Bell prepare an ordinance authorizing the financing with a bank to be named at your meeting on September 19th. And then we'll set up a bond closing on or about October 10th or so. So we'll have proceeds in place. Really about the time the project starts to get underway and you start having project expenses and you'll be able to use the proceeds from the lease to pay for the projects.
Are there any questions from the board to? Not, can we entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the Financial Services Contract Amendment for Piper Sandler?
Do you need to read the resolution?
A resolution amending Resolution 27-2020, a financial services agreement with Piper Sandler to provide additional services with respect to CLP financing for the pickleball court project.
I make a motion to approve. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed in the agenda packet is a memo from our finance director, Sheila Ernstin, recommending the city acquire additional computer software to aid in handling electronic vendor payments, which we believe will improve efficiency and work time in handling our accounts payable. And Sheila, you're welcome to address the board and explain that further if you'd like and answer any of the questions that they have.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Board. So electronic fund transfers are just payments that are made electronically from one bank account to another. It's pretty standard. Currently, we are issuing about 2,400 or 2,700 checks every year to vendors. And that takes about 200 hours of staff time, printing, stuffing, putting postage, signing. And then also, when the checks are cleared at the bank, we have to go in and find each one and clear each one individually. And so I think that it will save a lot of staff time and also some supply costs in switching over to doing electronic payments. Additionally, our bank does not have positive pay. That's a service that a lot of businesses use to help prevent check fraud. And that is not currently an option. So this will actually, since we don't have positive pay, it will actually make our payments be safer and not have the risk of fraud with them. There is some cost from our software company. However, that, the software that we would be getting, forms and content manager, they would be able to be used throughout the system, not just for accounts payable. So we could also utilize that technology for accounts receivable and also just to maintain all of our backup documentation electronically, which allows nobody to ever have to go searching for a paper file. Things can be misfiled if somebody grabs something and somebody else could still find it. And it also will make it much more efficient for our auditors. They wouldn't have to spend as much time on site. They wouldn't have to ask staff to be pulling different documents. And so I think that it's a very good use of funds.
Do we have server space for this?
They, the munis, will host all of that for us.
So it's all cloud-based?
Yes.
So you'll just, your staff and we're all, will you just create the Nacho file and send that to the bank and they'll manually send it or software do it?
The software will automatically create the Nacho file. We will upload it.
Okay.
Is there an ongoing cost for this once? Yes. So those modules that we will be adding will have, it's an additional $5,421 each year. So that's really because we're hosting, so we're paying the subscription fees to them.
Any other questions from the board?
I think the $5,400 plus a year will definitely be offset though by savings of 200 hours of our employees to free them up to do other tasks.
That manually sign and stuff and mail all those payments.
And I know there'll still be some of that as we discuss, but this will definitely cut back on some of their work.
There's another questions from staff. Can you read the proposed resolution?
Resolution authorizing the purchase of software from Tyler Technologies to process vendor payments via electronic funds transfers.
Make a motion to approve?
Excuse me?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you, Board and Mayor. I am very pleased to report tonight that we are out for bid for the 19th and Nation Road Roundabout Project. Bid opening is September the 22nd. This is the companion project to the I-35 interchange that we were anxious to see get moving. The engineers had to break it in two pieces because MODOT is playing, is, MODOT is not participating in this section of the roadway. This will be 100% city. And we believe we have the funding necessary to proceed with this. And we are hopeful that our bids are going to be good on September 22nd. Also, I'd like to report that, well, I guess I'm going to ask Sheila to report on the Clay County taxing jurisdictions, working on educational materials. We, the county commission, over the objections of many of the Clay County school districts and cities in the county, has placed a ballot question for lowering the surtax levy, which will cost the city of Carney approximately $20,000 annually if it succeeds. And
School district as well?
Carney's school district. School district will cost us them about the same. So Sheila, might you explain what a surtax is? Who pays it? And why it is that we don't think it's something that should be considered to even vote away?
So on November 8th, county voters will be asked if the commercial surtax levy that is collected by Clay County should be reduced by 15 cents. If this is approved, homeowners in the county will not receive any reduction in the taxes they pay. The surtax is only paid by property owners who own commercial real estate property. In the 1980s, the commercial surtax took the place of the merchants and manufacturers tax, which was a property tax on inventories. And Clay County's $1.59 surtax levy was calculated at that time to equate the amount that was needed to replace the lost revenues that resulted from the elimination of that inventory's tax. And it was used to help prevent a reduction in services that is provided by the taxing districts in the county. If the surtax rate that is paid by commercial real estate owners is reduced, Clay County School Districts, Cities, Road Districts, the Health Department and others will collectively lose $1.7 million of revenues that are used to provide important services to citizens. And as Mr. Aldrich said, the impact to us and also the school district would be about $20,000 of these. And the loss of that revenue will make it more difficult to balance the budget and to provide essential services to our community.
And as I understand it, the, this collective group met at the North Kansas City School District. You attended on and represented us there. And they are planning on meeting weekly until the election. Is that right?
Yes. Really, the effort is just to educate citizens, to let them know there's a lot of concern that that there might be a shift from what businesses are paying and shift that to the just typical citizens that are trying to live and pay their own taxes. And so we want to make sure that citizens are well-informed before they vote in November, so that they know what will happen and they have a back.
Great. Thank you for that report.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
We'll move on to public requests and petitions. We have Russ and Audrey Quinn here for a request for changing our current tattoo regulations. Enclosed in 5A is an email from Russ and Audrey for the board to consider changing the tattoo regulations. Last time this was discussed, at our August 19th, 2019 Board of Alderman meeting, staff presented an enclosed memo reporting on neighboring cities' tattoo regulations. Carney's current ordinance restricts tattoos to be formed by a doctor or under the direct supervision of a doctor. Our ordinance was borrowing from the city of Excelsor Springs in 2010. Excelsor since, however, amended their ordinance in 2016, removing that same physician requirement. At that time, city attorney Brian Hall assured the city's ordinance is not in conflict with state law and is legally enforceable. No actions were taken by the board at that time. Also here this evening with Russ and Audrey Quinn is their attorney, Mark Elabrock. So be happy to give you guys the floor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mark Elabrock. I'm the attorney for Russell Quinn and Audrey Quinn, who appear here tonight at the, well, the invitation of the mayor. I contacted the mayor several days ago and requested this matter be reconsidered. Russell's been a client of mine for more than a decade now. I know him and his wife very well. They recently moved to Carney. And before I discuss some of the suggested changes that he's brought with him tonight, which is sort of my responsibility, what he's paid me to do.
Sure.
I'd like to invite Russ to come up and tell them a little bit about his shop and a little bit about what they do and why they think that they can bring a business to Carney that's going to help enrich the community and make the Carney a place for some people who might want to come and visit. So Russ?
Thank you guys for having me. I'm honored to be here. Mayor and board members, a little nervous having done this.
It's okay.
So I made some notes here. I'm Russ. This is Audrey, my wife. We just moved to Carney here about three months ago to live the American dream. I have many friends and family that have moved up here and ranted and raved about Carney, and I believe in them. So we're here with our six kids. We have five that attend school here, two in high school and three in Southfield. We're a blended family. We have three out of the house actually also. So Divine Tattoo Parlour, I'm going to talk about, a little bit about it. I've had it for five years. I've been tattooing for 25 years now. I've been licensed for 21 years. I've had two prior shops before Divine. I decided to move up north to where most of my family lives there and my kids reside. So I started that about five years ago. Within that five years, I started with a small four boot shop. And within a year and a half, I was able to expand it to an eight boot shop. So it's a five-star shop. I'd like to say that my clients are a little more upper-class clients is what I like to see in there. They, I feel like they deserve the highest quality artwork and that's what I provide. So I have some other apprentices, they're not apprentices anymore. I apprenticed my wife actually also. She's been licensed now for three years. And six of the eight people at my shop are all multi-award winning artists. We go all over the United States and win awards. I just recently picked up a very important big award. It was Best of Show in Tulsa, Oklahoma, which has been a goal of mine for a while. I accomplished that. Pretty proud of that. So let's talk a little bit about my reviews and our customer service there at Divine. I mean, I have surpassed everyone in Kansas City. Kansas City is a big city, you know what I mean? But in the five years that I've been there, I have doubled the reviews, good reviews of any other shop that has been there for a decade or 15 years even, which I'm pretty proud of. We have people that come all around states, you know, St. Joe, they come and see us, Lawrence, they come and see us. Carney, people come down from Carney to see us. And I'd just like to say that, you know, times have changed. Tattoos are pretty mainstream now. I mean, you can go to McDonald's, you can go anywhere and you will see folks with tattoos. I currently book out, I'm booked out for four or five months. And, you know, folks 30, in their 30s, 40s. I have two clients right now that are in their 50s and I have one client that's in their 60s and they're getting big tattoos from it. You know, it's, it's not looked down upon, like it's not a taboo thing anymore. It's just mainstream. And, you know, we also provide piercings there also. So I teach everybody to pierce there. I am a hybrid, is what they call me, tattoo and piercing. So we do a lot of kids' ears piercings also. We have people come all around to get their ears pierced. Claire's is just an outdated, pretty brutal process when it comes to children's ear piercings. So I believe it should be a sterile professional environment for, you know, someone to get their ears pierced at any age. So also, I'd like to touch base. Divine, last year, on my square reader, we cleared over half a million dollars. My guys there, they make anywhere from $30,000 to $100,000 a year. I did that by $10.99 and it's all taxable too. What I'm trying to create here in town is something half that size, maybe a four boot shop. Me and my wife were booked out. She's booked out for three months. I'm usually booked out anywhere from four to six months. But I'd also like to provide the opportunity for folks to have a walk-in tattoo, to just walk in that day and get a smaller tattoo. That would be, that would be great. You know, I just feel like we sit the bar for tattoo. You know, all of our clients that come in, I mean, they're blown away at our customer service. And they're, they're, they're just giddy of what a great tattoo, a high-quality tattoo that we provide them, you know? Not to mention, this would be a family-owned, a family-owned business, me and my wife. So, you know, I would be honored if you guys would give me a chance to show my, show my skeleton card. That's all I've got.
Great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So in addition to the tattoo services that Mr. Quinn provides, he's also in the business of providing certain charity contributions and donations, including tattoo removal for youths that find themselves in the custody of Watkinsville State Park. I know right now he's got a couple of clients that have come to him that have had, requested tattoos to be removed from their bodies. They got them at a young age, probably illegally, well, I guarantee you they got them illegally in the state of Missouri anyway. And they now are having those removed by his shop, free of any charge at all. He provides those services pro bono to people that want to come. A half a million dollar business being added to the city of Carney, I think we can all agree, is probably a great idea, notwithstanding, you know, some people may be hesitant about it. But in an effort to sort of help get the conversation started and get the ball But in an effort to sort of help get the conversation started and get the ball rolling, I took the liberty of drafting what I think might be a starting point for a proposed ordinance that the city council might take up or consider amending or how. I don't know exactly what your process is here, but I do know that it's similar to a lot of other places. So I've written up something that does take into account what Excelsor Springs did when they amended their tattooing license and there's been a couple of subtle changes. I'm not going to insult anybody's intelligence by reading this unabated. I'm going to trust everybody can do that on their own. But I do want to point out a couple of variations from where the city of Excelsor Springs is different to what the proposal that Mr. Quinn has asked me to provide to the city council tonight. So if you take a look at this, it's titled Tattoo Parlor Regulations. I've handed one out to everybody here and can make one available electronically soon as things over. If you jump down to bullet point number C, it puts a limitation and Excelsor Springs does not have this, but we thought in the interest of Carney being a lifelong resident of Clay County between Liberty and Carney, I've been up here quite a few times. My father poured a lot of concrete here in town once upon a time. And knowing the sort of history and traditions of Carney and the closeness that this community has, we wanted to make sure that we respected a lot of people's feelings on what they might have about the shop. So we put a 20,000 resident sort of triggering mechanism. So one tattoo parlor per every 20,000 residents. City's allowed to have one tattoo parlor until they hit 20,000, then issue another license and then issue another license. And that's sort of in an effort to prevent anybody's fear that the town might turn into a place where they just have a strip of liquor stores, tattoo shops and gun shops, writing down one like alleyway or something, right? We want to avoid that and provide a nice respectable professional business as Mr. Quinn suggested he would like to open up here. Again, any of these provisions are open to your consideration. It's not anything required on just anything like that. But then there paragraph D, it removes the requirement that it that the tattoos be performed under the direct supervision of a physician, which is sort of the hang up point right now. Currently, Carney's ordinance only allows tattoos to be performed under the direct supervision of a physician. That's in section 16. That would be what we would be repealing by the proposed language here. And it allows for the presence of the person's parents if you're tattooing a minor, which doesn't happen that often in the state of Missouri. For it, it's tattooing a minor under the age of, I believe, 17 right now anyway, so it's not really a huge issue. And it also requires that any piercings be administered by a person who has the informed consent of a child or a minor. So that person has to be, their parent has to be present and sign a waiver in the presence of the person administering the piercing or in some very limited cases, tattoos of minor children, kids under the age of 18 but over 16 or 17, they get their tattoo. If you turn over to page, the second page of this, the provisions in section E and there's another section here in section H, which sort of work to support one another. E prohibits them from performing tattoos or piercings on another human being who's under the influence of an intoxicating liquor controlled substance. In other words, you can't walk into a shop drunk and expect to get a tattoo. He will kick you out, as should anybody. I'm pretty sure it's illegal in the state of Missouri to do it, but the ordinance reinforces that and provides separate provisions for penalties. It's a little lower down in the thing. It also, again, section H that supplements that creates a timeframe on when the tattoo shops, any tattoo shop might be open and able to do business. Not allowed to be open until 8:00 AM and must close by 7:00 PM. Again, that prevents a lot of people from wandering in off the street drunk as somebody like some of my friends in the army used to do overseas. You go into a tattoo parlor at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning and the next thing you know, you're walking out with your unit tattooed on your shoulder somewhere. And that's, that's what the hours restrictions designed to stop. So that varies a little bit from Excelsor's because it's a different set of time. It also provides for $500 per violation. Excelsor Springs only allows $500 fine for a violation. This is per each and every violation of somebody where violate this code. It also allows 90 days, a potential for 90 days in the city jail, which I'm sure most people would try to probably avoid that because of the cost and expense. And then finally, the city retains the right to shut down the shop if any of these violations occur. By in section K there, it says that the city can find it to be a public nuisance and they may abate that public nuisance by any provision provided for in law. And that includes going in and shutting the business down until they're back in compliance with the city ordinance. So I think that we've provided the city a really good starting point for consideration and what might be a good way forward in providing for safe and professional and clean artistry to be done in Carney. And if there's any other questions, I'd happily sit myself to the panel.
Any questions from the board?
Do you have an extra copy?
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am.
Thank you.
So I assume that these shops are licensed by the health department?
Yes.
Okay. Are those yearly inspections or?
So that's a yearly inspection. There is actually a license that you have to obtain through Jeff's city. It's the one that's doing the piercing. Kevin coming out from inspections in this area here. He does it yearly at my shop. If sometimes if he didn't, doesn't know who you are, he'll come in and you house him a few times a year. You know, make sure that you're compliant with everything.
Is there continued education with that license? Is there continued education with that license each year?
Continued education?
You just pay a fee?
Yeah, we just pay a fee.
Can you, in H, you talked about the hours.
Yes, what's your question, sir?
So you're saying that they're going to be open from 8:00 to 7:00?
Yeah, they're, they shall not be permitted to perform any tattoos, body piercings or brandings from 7:00 PM until 8:00 PM. So the prohibition is beginning at 7:00 PM and the prohibition abides until 8:00 PM, at which point shops are allowed to open when the prohibition abates.
Just, just curious, your current shop's noon to 8:00, right?
So we're noon to 8:00.
Yeah.
We're trying to.
Is that where your journey's a little different here?
We'd probably be like 10:00 to 6:00.
Okay.
Probably before. We're trying to get home to get the kids up.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we leave there about three weeks.
So are you thinking this shop would be one of you guys or one of your other artists that would be up here?
No, it would just be me and Audrey. So it would just be us. Yeah, we would definitely like that two years ago.
Sure. Any other questions from the board?
No one's going to ask me how many tattoos I have?
More than I do.
Well, I think something Joe want to look at.
I've just got two. Yeah, if, if the board does have a desire to change its ordinance, we recommend maybe a simple motion to provide these requests to our city attorney. Give them the opportunity to recommend an updated ordinance, amended ordinance to the board relatively soon, future meeting, that could look at facilitating some of these requests.
Yeah, I think we need legal counsel around to look at, no offense.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing prepared to prove tonight on it. Yeah, but that would, I mean, yeah, didn't know if anybody on the board would entertain a motion to allow us to do that.
I'd add that I was the one that asked them for a written request of what they want to change so, so we could get that in writing so to give to our attorneys.
I'll make a motion to have our attorneys give us a recommendation on this.
One second.
One favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, so a next step is we will get your recommendations and requests to update our ordinance to our city attorney and their firm. And staff will keep you and Mr. Albrecht updated. And when we, which I would think would be relatively soon, would have that back from our city attorney. The board will then have the updated ordinance presented to them for consideration to pass. We'll make sure you guys are aware and have the opportunity to attend that as well.
Thanks very much. Thank you for your time.
Nice to meet you. Sorry.
If I could add one thing, I did go to his website.
Do you like a sign?
Yeah. That was, that was, that was really neat. Yeah, that sealed it.
Yeah.
It was pretty cool, so.
Yeah, I noticed that as well, so.
Yeah, I'm a firm believer in those rules there.
That's good. Not everybody is.
No, I am definitely.
Welcome to Carney. I'm glad your kiddos had a first good week of school in Carney and we'll be talking to you guys soon.
Yep.
And Mr. Mayor, I might point out that Mr. Ellenbrock brought up that his father had done lots of concrete work around here. Well, we had the opportunity as a city to work with, with Mr. Ellenbrock. He poured the section from the railroad to Platte Clay Way on West Washington, which has been a good, good road, still is a good road. And so I've always had a good respect for your father's work.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. I'll let him know. You said so. We have Baptist church we did and it's all up here with the liquor store in it and a bunch of other stuff too. So it's fun hauling around her forms for him when I was a teenager.
We have no public hearings this evening. We do have an item to discuss under old business.
Mr. Mayor, our engineers have requested additional information concerning the civil plans that submit, that were submitted by Mr. Riles engineers. So to date, we have no plans that are approved for construction. And we are still evaluating the best course of action in drafting a proposed ordinance that might improve the building process. Unfortunately, we are not in a position to recommend that the board take any actions this evening.
Any?
When we left it, left it that Jeff was going to get with him and we were going to work on some suggestions of changing our process. Did that ever happen?
We've had discussions and I think Jim kind of reports on that in the memo or in the agenda and that we don't have recommendation back yet from our attorney.
But did your attorney speak with Mr. Riles as, as was stated in the last meeting?
I think he has. I believe he has. I know I've had several conversations with him since that time. In fact, today he called me. He had another question about something, but we talked the other day about what our engineer needed and our engineer had requested an update on the stormwater report because changes to that report may affect the site plan resubmital that they made. And so they were kind of awaiting that additional information and I'm not sure if they have it yet. Mark told me last Friday that it was supposed to have been submitted sometime last week. After we hung up, he was going to call Mary Claire. I talked to him today and he has not heard back from Mary Claire yet, so.
So we never got that. We never got that from his.
Right, that's not been resubmitted or at least the completed submittal has not been received yet.
We've also had some assistance from Alderman Lehman, who has building experience and he's consulted with our attorney and well as with David and you might want to report on that.
Yeah, so David and Jeff and I have had several conversations. And I've seen a similar process at a previous employer. The, it's, it's commonly called a land disturbance or a below grade infrastructure permit. But the only two municipalities that I'm aware of in the Kansas City area that do something like this are the city of Lee Summit and the city of Independence. Both of those are much, much bigger than, than the city of Carney is. And I can speak directly to, to Independence's process is a process through Public Works. And the Public Works Department in Independence has almost as many employees as we do total. So they have the people to be able to manage this type of process. The problem with this process is that unless you make it very strict, it, it can come back and bite you. I also talked to the previous building official in Excelsor. Mr. Riles has a project that, that just got completed in, in Excelsor. And there's been issues. And that project, the biggest problem with that process is that Excelsor did not tie their, whatever we call it, land disturbance or below grade infrastructure, whatever, whatever you call it, they didn't tie the footing plans to the permit. And when it came time to get the buildings and get them on site, there suddenly was no longer available, availability of some of the building, buildings that he was putting in this, this self-storage place. And so consequently, that whole project changed. And now they are having a very definite issue with water drainage, sheet flowing out of the project across, I don't remember what road. Is that Carney Road?
Isley Road?
Might be.
Carney Road.
It's Carney Road.
It's the road that goes beside Orslands. So I, I think it's Carney Road, but I could be wrong. And she flows across that. There's houses across the street. And according to gentleman that I know, he said they've had issues with water infiltration in the houses and basements across the street. And that was all because they didn't tie the footing plans to their land disturbance or below grade, their, their permit process. So, you know, this, if we do this, if we make this change, we have to be prepared for, with growth, we're going to see people try to use this over and over and over again. And do we have the manpower to be able to properly regulate this? I would question that we do. You know, Independence has 20, maybe even 30 people that work in their Public Works Department. We have nowhere close to that. So the other aspect that I thought was kind of strange, Mr. Riles said that it was going to take him, unless I misunderstood, it was going to take him till December to get building plans. I, before I left the city of Lexington, I had two contractors that built, in one case, in both cases, multiple storage units. They had plans to me within, stamped plans to me within four weeks.
Mr. Riles was in my office today and he called the engineer and engineer told, I didn't even speak. He's just talking to him and he told him that he wouldn't have until December.
Wow, I really, and maybe it's the type of building that he's using. But I, and I've got projects in where I work now that are multi-story buildings and we can get revisions a lot easier.
Well, he said they, and he asked him on the phone, he's on speakerphone, he asked me if he could use a different engineer firm. And because it's their building, they told him no.
Well, yeah, it's proprietary.
And they told him that he wouldn't have them till December. And he says, that's as soon as I can get it. And he said, yeah, December.
Alderman Lehman. So I, I share some of the same concerns that if we would, first, I think of the expectation of us changing such an ordinance like this in two weeks is just insane. Right. To be honest, I mean, second is Carney's going to continue to grow. You know, we know that. And I'm in fear if we set the precedent that you can start construction early or, 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 you know, I mean, then everybody's going to want, have a reason or want on why we need to move forward. You just mentioned many examples of why we have a process, why we have to follow that process to protect the city, to protect our applicants. And the last thing I would want to see us do, in my opinion, is loosen and relax some of these rules to a. these rules to allow commercial projects to start. I mean, and I think there's even some state laws that require stamp plans and, and engineer-approved plans for commercial projects too, so. I, I think there's a fine line, not, not a fine line, there's, I, I don't want us to confuse being a pro-development, good community with, with our investors and the people that invest money in our community to not making smart decisions long-term that could cause long-term issues. I, I feel bad that this guy's having the hardships he is, that he's having a hard time with materials as engineer. But I also don't think that that is necessarily our fault, and I'm not saying he's pointing finger at us, but I don't think, to me, those are big enough reasons or, or, or valid enough reasons for the city to take on that risk of our, our standard process. I'd love to hear the board, there's some board's thoughts if you have on the topic. I know we've spent a lot of time, I doubt we've spent a lot of time with staff on this. I'd love to hear anybody else's thoughts if they have them.
I think some of our builders already tried to cut corners and do some things that we already have a couple of areas in town that have an issue or two. I think this is an opening for more issues. And I could be mistaken, but that's my thought.
The other, thank you. Other thing I meant to say is too is staff enforces the rules and ordinances that we put in place, right? So what staff is currently enforcing is, is we control, right? So I, I don't think staff's trying to be difficult either, is what I'm, what I'm trying to say.
I think they have our best interests at heart.
There's no other discussion. So should we continue to table this until staff has adequate information, adequate, an adequate submittal? Jim, what's?
I had a brief interchange with Alderman Lehman, who suggested that we abandon our effort to try to draft an ordinance simply because he felt uncomfortable proceeding with it. And so, I mean, we try to be open-minded and alert to what's, what our neighbors are doing and, I mean, we can, I think comparing us to Independence and Lee Summit isn't something that we wanna be doing. I, I think if, if, if Excelsor Springs has done something, and we've, we have talked to them and I think they regret what they've done here recently, and so I'm not so sure that that's the path to go. We talked to Smithville, they're certainly our size and, and may have had some experiences to share with us on, on how to do that. We had this at-risk process put in place for just a very narrow issue and that had to do with, with somebody wanting to, and it was the price chopper and David said there was public improvements that were keeping, that were, were incomplete, that were keeping a plat from being recorded. Well, and that's a black and white, you can't issue a building permit on an unrecorded plat. That's a state law, not, not just a, not just a city law.
So, yeah, and it's, it's my, my opinion, an at-risk permit would should be used for in the public's best interest, to save our infrastructure. Or for some reason, we dropped the ball on an issue, right, and something's hung up because, you know, but I could see the city taking risk based on that. Unfortunately, take the applicant name off of it, take the project name off of it, right? I don't care who it is. I don't feel like it's in the best interest of this board to put the taxpayers in our city at risk because the project doesn't have its submittal timely, for whatever reason, out of our control. I, I, I just don't agree with that. So, so Mr. Lehman, did you want to make a motion to just, to not move forward with?
I would, I would make that motion. I just, I don't see that we can proceed.
So that I'm gonna make sure that your motion's clear. You wanna make a motion to instruct staff and our city attorney to halt any land disturbance permit consideration?
That's correct.
Is there a second on that motion?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pose?
Aye.
Passes three ayes and one no. Okay, I will move on to the new business.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed is a familiar ordinance that, that all of you have seen over the course of your tenure on the, our board, which is the financial disclosure policy. It is identical to the ones passed before. We have to pass one every other year, although Missouri Municipal League recommends that we adopt one every year, just in case we, we would forget and not get that done. We want, they want us to do it every year and, and so therefore it's on your agenda every year. To pass an ordinance that would limit the financial disclosure responsibilities to, to primarily the mayor and the city administrator who file a simpli- simplified form and to any board member that might have a, a transaction in excess of $500 with the city, city of Carney.
I can assure you, mine continues to be boring. I'm, I'm not a wealthy individual.
If you'd like me to read by title only, I will.
No questions from the board, read by, first reading on title only, please.
An ordinance of the city of Carney, Missouri to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance of the city of Carney, Missouri to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
Motion to approve on second reading.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Both unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. We'll move on to Alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
I am really pleased with how the first week of school has gone for our students. I have heard good things from a variety of teachers and students, so kudos to Carney.
Great. Alderman Holt?
I got two things. First, I wanna say, if you were in town Saturday night, Saturday night was hopping. Everything was going on. They had a great cornhole tournament going on uptown, had a movie in the park that was packed, I had a good concert up at the amphitheater for Tom Carey. If you couldn't find something to do Saturday night in Carney, you had problems. And it was great to see everybody out and you couldn't beat the weather. The weather was awesome. And it was just good to see, you know, I always like it and I've said it for years that I love it if we can always make it to where, we can make Carney a great place to live, play, and work. And Saturday was kind of a little microcosm of that and it was, it was really cool. The second thing is, I have a question, should we be getting in touch with 911 and, and getting 144th change to 19th Street? Cause right now it didn't, that the thing, well, is, are we gonna keep that 144th and that side, 19th Street on this side with the bridge as the divider? To get those addresses changed or to get the street changed, you're gonna have to get with a 911 system to do that.
Well, we do have a break, the roundabout is a break. And 19th Street is shifted north of 144th Street, so there, even on the west, east side of the new roundabout, there are a couple of houses there. Canning, Lloyd Canning, will still live on 144th Street and will, it still exists.
But would the new roundabout, everything be called 19th Street?
Up until that.
Up until the break.
We're gonna call our street 19th Street.
Well, I didn't know we was calling it on the other side of there.
And there will be addresses on 19th Street and there, as there are today, that retain their 144th address because they're still in the county. Isn't that right, David? Jack Bar Estates?
Oh, they, there are a few, yeah.
Yeah.
So that would, I would stay 144?
Kinda like Independence Avenue, it's got two or three different names.
Yeah, I, I just didn't know if we needed it. Did that change? Cause I didn't know how long that process took.
Stallings Ranch, that Stallings Ranch property, there are not properties, there aren't proposed houses that have driveways that run onto 144th Street, so there would be no need there when that developed.
Well, I was thinking of Lloyd's House, actually.
Yeah.
Canning's property.
There, there will still be a section of 144th Street there with two or three houses.
Judy won't let you change your address.
Why not?
Oh, why, why you bring up the interchange project? I was out there with staff getting an update from Clarkson. I may or may not have went out there one time without a hard hat and vest. Got, got reminded.
You corrected the record.
About my failure to wear PPE, but Donnie and his staff have plenty of PPE here at City Hall. If you guys would ever wanna go out with staff or with myself to check on the staff progress, let us know. We're always obviously welcome to, so. Alderman Lehman?
Well, it's funny that you mentioned that. It's, you know, there for a while, the highway project seemed to, unless you were looking over the highway to the little culvert that they were building down there, you really didn't see anything. And, and now you're seeing massive amounts of dirt, especially on the west side. You know, it's, it's fun to watch the progress that's going on there. Came home tonight and, and now there's rebar sticking up in the center of, of the highway. So we're, we're starting to see lots of, lots of progress on the highway and it's, it's fun to see. I actually had somebody, I don't know what, what rock they lived under, but actually sent me a text wanting to know what was being built out there. It's like, you know, I don't know what rock you live under, but it's, it's an overpass. So, yeah, so.
They moved dirt on the west side, I don't know, is that for the ramp? It's.
Yeah, they're building up for fill. The massive fills obviously wanna be on the east side, but I, I watched, you know, I'm out there weekly and that massive underground container and, and, and just the amount of concrete and steel to build that box and, and it, it's so impressive.
Now, is there another one on the east side?
Yes.
Or, yeah, on the, no, the west.
The, the big side, the big one's on the east side, the big portion.
And there will be another one on the west side?
Yes.
Okay, I figured there probably.
On ramp.
Yeah, I figured there probably was, but the other things that, you know, right along with that, Starbucks is moving very fast. You know, it went from steel standing there to now it's, you know, it's, it's got the, the primer for the stucco and, and so that's moving along. We've talked about Arby's. And then tonight, we, we approved the construction of pickleball courts and so it's an exciting, kinda like what Alderman Holt said, it's, it's exciting times in Carney. And, and it's, it's exciting to see all the construction going on and, and the town moving forward, so it's, it's fun, so.
Alderman Barker?
I think you all covered it, so I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass for this evening.
If we entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm moved.
I'll second.